Good evening. Welcome to the August 8th, 2023 Combined Work Session Regular In-Person and Virtual Meeting. The first item on the work session agenda is a Pledge of Allegiance by Board Vice President Don Fields, because Board President Brown, Edward Brown, is not here tonight.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Right now, I would like for us to have a moment of silence. We lost two community members in the last month or so. We're having a moment of silence for Rap Curry and John Cunningham. So, value your hits. Before we call tonight's meeting to order, Dr. McGary, will you please outline the public participation procedures?
Yes, Vice President Fields, thank you. There are a couple of ways you can participate in tonight's meeting. First and foremost, it's important to note that anyone who wanted to provide a general comment, either virtually or in person, had to do so either by signing in prior to 7:30 or sending their comments to Board Meeting Comments@updarbysd.org prior to 7:30 and making us know that was for general comment. This is a legislative meeting, so tonight is comment only. It is not a question and answer format. The board will take comments into consideration before they move any reports or items forward. The public have an opportunity to comment after the board provides that open window for commenting. Virtually, you can phone in at 610-789-7200, extension 2000. Again, please provide your name, address, and the specific report you'd like to comment on. If you'd like to email it in, please send your email to BoardMeetingComments@updarbysd.org. Again, please identify the specific report you'd like to comment on, and the board will take that into consideration before moving forward. Those who are in person can come to the microphone, say your name and address, and the board will listen to your comment. Comments are three minutes long this evening. General comments do not exceed one hour. We take in-person individuals first, and we certainly welcome any participation in this evening's meeting, and I'm happy to provide an update as we go.
Thank you, Dr. McGary. We'll revisit that again if we have to. The regular in-person and virtual meeting of the Upper Darby School District Board of School Directors will please come to order. There was a closed session on July 17th, 2023, from 5:00 to 5:45 for real estate matters, and this evening, from 5:30 to 7:30, for matters to be discussed within the limitations for closed deliberations as prescribed by the Pennsylvania Act 93 of 1998. For this evening's meeting, there were personnel and litigation matters. Roll call, Board Secretary, Mr. Rogers, please.
Dr. Hague.
Present.
Mr. Jess Newers.
Present.
Mr. Neal.
Mr. War Savage.
Present.
Ms. Murphy-Merisi.
Ms. Williams.
Ms. Mitchell.
I am present, and I can hear the proceedings.
Mr. Fields.
Present.
Thank you, Mr. Rogers. The district posted this evening's agenda to board docs at least 24 hours prior to the commencement of this meeting. Is there a motion to approve that previously posted agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Are there any amendments to offer?
No, not at this time.
Fantastic. The agenda has been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Those opposed, please signify by saying aye opposed and state your name for the record. Those abstaining, please signify by saying aye abstain and state your name for the record. Motion carried. The minutes of the Combined Work Session Regular Meeting of June 6th, 2023, and the Special Meeting of June 20th, 2023 are in the hands of each board member and have been made available to the public. I move for their adoption. Are there any comments from the board? Are there any comments from the public? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, please signify by saying aye opposed and state your name for the record. Those abstaining, please signify by saying aye abstain and state your name for the record. Now for the Report of the Secretary from School Board Director, Deborah Williams.
Thank you. The Report of the Secretary is in the hands of each board member and has been made available to the public. I move for its adoption.
Second.
Thank you. Are there any comments from the board? Are there any comments from the public? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, please signify by saying aye opposed and state your name for the record. Those abstaining, please signify by saying aye abstain and state your name for the record. Motion carried. Now, for the Report of the Treasurer, Director Neal is not available, so I will say, "The reports of the treasurer are in the hands of each board member and have been made available to the public. I move for their adoption."
Second.
Are there any comments from the board? Are there any comments from the public? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, please signify by saying aye opposed and state your name for the record. Those abstaining, please signify by saying aye abstain and state your name for the record. Motion carried. It's August, we don't have any student representatives yet, so no report there. The budgeted personnel and enrollment reports have been made available to the board and the public and are recorded as part of the record. No vote is required. We will now have the Report of the Superintendent, Dr. Daniel McGary.
Good evening, Vice President Fields, members of the board, administration, teachers, family members, some excited young family members for their parents tonight. We're excited for you as well. Thank you for joining us. You know, the old saying, "The time goes by too quickly," is certainly true. Here in the district, we would have hoped, much like our young students, that the summer would last a little longer, but that's not the case. We're going to be welcoming back new teachers in the next week, and the first day of school is August 20, the 8th. So, the '22-'23 school year is behind us, and we're looking for the '23-'24 school year moving forward, and that's certainly a daunting task, given the certain nature and outlook on public education today. But I wanted to celebrate some of our efforts moving into the new school year. I want to talk about where we are with our current facilities projects, not just major construction projects, but updates that we've had along the way, our ongoing staffing efforts, and let you know where we are with filling our open positions, and my goals and our goals as an administrative team here in the district. Facilities and projects updates. We'll start with a big one right now for me. The biggest stressor is Aronomic Elementary School. It certainly looks like it's an ongoing project, and every other day and every other week, it gets better and better. Thankfully, our home and school, district home and school, has been very supportive in meeting with us. The Aronomic Home and School and the Sanco Home and School, it's been a wonderful collaboration throughout this process. Some hiccups along the way, but we've worked together to come to an understanding that we're moving this project forward. We are positively optimistic that on the first day of school, the building will be ready, not perfect, but ready for the merger of Sanco and Aronomic Elementary School. It will be an active and ongoing construction site throughout the fall, but we are on the right path to make sure that Aronomic is open for the first day of school with our students. It's certainly a huge and heavy lift for the community, and I want to say also to the community members, thank you for their patience with an ongoing, active construction site there in Aronomic. 8201 Lansdowne Avenue, known as the 8201 Project. We were hoping that tonight would have been our first meeting to hold a board meeting at 8201. There were some technology delays with getting some infrastructure in place. Positives are that the administration and the Transportation Department are working and operating out of 8201, and so that our next meeting on August the 22nd will take place at the new administrative offices. The committee meetings will take place on August the 22nd. We'll also be having a hearing on a new charter school application that evening on August the 22nd. So, that will not be here in Upper Darby, it'll be at 8201 Lansdowne Avenue. The Upper Darby High School Track and Field, if you are here tonight and you want to take a drive around the back of the property, you'll see that the construction project there is well underway. There's new stone, new macadam, and the new turf will be delivered here in the next two weeks, and so hopefully we'll have our first home game sometime in mid-September. The new track and the new field will be in place here at Upper Darby High School. Some of the weather has delayed some of the project, but we are optimistic that we'll be on the right path to hold games here in the fall at home at Upper Darby High School. Other projects: exterior lighting, district-wide. All perimeter security lights will be updated and improved, and most of the schools will be completed before the school year '23-'24. Fence replacement projects have been going on district-wide, and 95% or more of the fences will be completed before the '23-'24 school year. Floors, new floors: Bywood, Hillcrest, Primus, Beverly Hills, and the high school. Throughout the buildings and certain wings, there'll be new floors completed by the '23- '24 start of the school year and beyond. Gym lighting replacement, district-wide, all completed. Auditoriums, secondary schools, we're in Phase 1 of ordering equipment and getting that ready for the secondary schools in the district, and we hope that that equipment will be completed for the '23-'24 school year. Phase 2, which is floors, seats, walls, and ceilings in our auditoriums throughout the secondary schools, will go out to bid and HAS, and we hope that between December and August of '24, that entire project is completed for the auditoriums in the school district. Very exciting to have new spaces at Beverly Hills, Drexel Hill, and Upper Darby High School. They've probably been, I know at Drexel Hill Middle School, it's the original seats, the original stuff that's in that room, and we're replacing that, which is long overdue. High school boiler room, scheduled to be completed shortly after the high school starts to open this year, and it won't be an impact on getting our students in, but there'll be a new boiler in place at the high school. Street signs, district-wide signage on our properties, we are going out with a uniform signage system in the district. That will be completed before the '23-'24 school year. There will also be marquee signs, district-wide. We have some ongoing meetings taking place with the township to make sure that we meet the appropriate approvals for new electronic marquees to be in place throughout the district at all of our elementary schools and secondary schools, and we hope that throughout the '23-'24 school year, that the new marquees will be in place. Painting. K-Center hallway gym and the aftercare and morning care program, Bywood's gym and stair tower, Gareford's stair tower hallway gym cafeteria have been repainted, Hillcrest's hallway and gym have been repainted, Stonehurst, the gym, the cafeteria, and the stair tower and the kitchen have been repainted, Beverly Hills' main lobby has been repainted, and there's other scheduled painting to be completed for the '23-'24 school year, not finished yet. We've re-screened basketball courts at the high school, Drexel Hill, Beverly Hills, and yes, the kindergarten center. The little gym down there has been re-screened. Stairwells, district-wide. Schools will be completed for the '23-'24 year school year, and most of them will be updated and taken care of for the '23, beginning of the fall. Generators and emergency power, district-wide. Items to be connected, so if there's ever an emergency event, certain hallways, stairwells, nurses' office, front-of-the-office Wi-Fi, public announcements systems, phones, cameras, interior and exterior, and emergency outlets that we have will be now backed up on backup generators in the school district, and that should be completed by the fall of '23. Miscellaneous projects. Beverly Hills repair front masonry steps. Beverly Hills install bollards in the front so that there can be no car access or damage done to the property there. Primus install walkway from the back door to the autistic playground, it's been completed. Drexel Hill Middle School install walkway from the back door to the back of the property, should be in place before the start of the school year. In Highland Park, we're getting new basketball hoops put in at Highland Park area. That's a lot. It's a total team effort, right? And that's a thank you to the entire administrative team for working together and the board to put these projects in place. In particular, thank you to the facilities group. I see Marvin in the back, and he likes to keep a low profile, but Marvin Lee, our manager of facilities, Tim Leaf, Craig Harnacek, who oversees capital projects, Joe McGilvery, who does purchasing, Chris Rossiter, who's an assistant manager of facilities, Tim Leaf. So many people go into making this happen. I think it's important that we highlight, I get to give this report each month, but I'm certainly not the only person that pulls this off. It's a total team effort. So Marvin and Craig, to your team, that's a lot, and I know there's many more projects that we have even on the list that will be coming out soon. It's really important that we make our facilities a point of pride. That's feedback that we've received from kids every single year at the high school. Fix the facilities, make them better, and I appreciate that effort. I also want to say thank you to Dr. Manfree. He's not here tonight, so don't let him know that I thanked him, because it'll go right to his head, and Mr. Rehack for figuring out and being patient on the work that's going on in Aronomic. It is, it's a dauntless task to be a principal of a school with a construction project, let alone taking on another school coming into your building at the start of a new school year. So I want to say thank you to Dr. Manfree and to Mr. Rehack for their work on that construction project. Again, as I said, it's a total team effort that carries forward into my update on staffing for the '23-'24 school year. I have met with our district home and school team, and we'll have another update meeting with them on August the 14th. I am sure by now that the nationwide teacher shortage and staffing shortage is not a secret to anyone. It is unfortunate, if not tragic, that the teaching profession is not as respected as it should be, and as a result, we are left with the reality that administrators and teachers are leaving the profession in significant numbers, and fewer and fewer people are considering education as their profession. Here in Upper Darby, our principals, directors, and human resources team have been working nonstop to do their best to open the school year with all teaching positions, support staff positions, bus drivers, crossing guards, noontime assistants, and there are so many other positions we have to fill to run the school district, to fill them on time for the start of the school year. Right now, and this is going to sound great, and I don't want to take this away, that 97% of our positions are staffed, but there are still too many unfilled teaching positions, crossing guard positions, noontime assistants, hallway monitors. We need all of those positions filled for our kids. Specifically, anybody who wants to encourage a friend or any one of you in the audience who wants to change careers, we need teachers of special education, reading specialists, English language learning teachers, secondary science teachers in particular, very hard hit this year, very few applicants in secondary science, math, we need someone who wants to be a crossing guard, a bus driver, or other support staff, along with noontime assistants who would like to work on the playground with our elementary school students during lunchtime and recess. Very important that we try to fill those positions, so please pass this along. On the 14th, I will be giving a number update to our home and school, because I promised our home and school that we will be upfront and honest about the positions that we have opened and what would look like going into school year next year if we aren't able to fill some of those positions. Opening schools on time with appropriate staff is our highest priority. Other school communities may not be able to open schools on time, and in some districts and other states, they have moved to a four-day student week in order to address current staffing shortages. We are planning for a full opening of our schools with in-person instruction as well as other instructional models in order to compete with charter schools. Once again, for this year, we have asked teachers, especially at the secondary level, to consider teaching an additional course for additional compensation. I am happy to report that any current secondary professional vacancy at this time will be covered by an Upper Darby teacher. I want to say thank you to our Upper Darby Education Association and their leadership and their membership, Dr. Matt Alockway, the principal of Upper Darby High School, Mr. James Finch, former assistant principal at the high school, and newly appointed supervisor of K-12 guidance, who's in charge of the schedule still at the high school, Ms. Kelly Simone, the director of secondary education, our district supervisors, Mr. Marshallak, our assistant superintendent for student services, Dr. Council, and the human resources team and equity team for meeting with me throughout the summer to help establish a plan to make sure our students have educational opportunities. If we are to continue to provide the type and number of opportunities that we do for our high school students, we need a state-level and national plan to encourage people to become teachers and administrators. In our district, we have a new collective bargaining agreement in place with all of our unions, so the lack of qualified applicants is far greater than anyone in this room can solve. It is not simply about contracts. We have new contracts in place for all of our collective bargaining groups. The concern now is, where are the applicants? They simply do not exist. We need action on a national and state level to solve years of underfunding and supporting of public schools and educators. We are now in a crisis, and it needs immediate attention. I want to be clear that the current plan is not the best long-term educational plan. It is not best to ask other teachers to take on additional classes throughout the school day. It leads to burnout and lack of teacher retention. Our focus in Upper Darby has been opportunity, unity, and excellence. If we reach academic and social-emotional excellence with our students, we need everyone on board supporting our schools. Student achievement increases when there is a strong balance of support between home and school. We are asking educators to continue to do more, teachers, administrators, support staff, everyone involved, they're taking on more work. As I said, it ultimately leads to burnout. I mentioned this last year several times in public outcries, and maybe sometimes it was misinterpreted. One simple solution that we can do together is to come together as a community and support our students by supporting our schools. Please get involved in your home and school association, when and wherever possible. Until we are fully and appropriately funded, we are going to continue to operate under less-than-ideal circumstances with very high stakes, young people, right? Very important. Thankfully, we started our conversations regarding the national teacher shortage over a year ago, and we have ongoing meetings with our local teachers' association to provide them with updates as well. As we did last year, I want everyone to be mindful that staffing shortages could lead to very difficult decisions. We are not only facing a teacher shortage, but an overall staffing shortage that will result in a lack of coverage for classes with a teacher or substitute teacher, and undoubtedly in transportation. There are few realities we still need to keep in mind regarding shortages in transportation and with substitute teachers. Last year, we provided our plans to manage days with higher teacher absenteeism and low substitute teacher availability, as well as days when we are lacking bus drivers. During the '23-'24 school year, there may be times when our ability to open school for the day may not be possible because of staffing, and we will be reminding you of the plan we provided you last year and our timeline for making decisions for personnel-related school closures with you prior to August 28th. You'll know that plan again, and we'll certainly communicate what that plan would be. Please keep in mind, this will be a last resort and strictly related to our ability to cover classes on days with high teacher absenteeism. This time each year, I also announce my goals for the new school year. Some of the goals will be short-term as well as long-term. Superintendent's goals will be recruit and continue to develop and retain the best staff. As I said, we already have new agreements in place with all of our collective bargaining groups. We'll continue to communicate, improve our communication internally and externally, not just through our communication that we have, but last year, Aronda and I, our director of communications, started community pop-ups. We'll be having coffee meetings with the community members throughout the fall and community pop-ups at local businesses to stop and meet with community members to talk about the state of the district. We will continue to emphasize social and emotional learning for all kids and opportunities for all kids in social-emotional learning. We have PBIS, we have restorative justice, we have trauma-informed strategies in place. They will continue and continue to be refined here in the school district. One of my focuses and will continue to be is to continue to emphasize a strong elementary educational foundation in all subject areas with a focus on student growth. Thankfully, the board approved new reading specialists this year that are in the budget, and we're trying to hire seven new elementary school reading specialists. We also have assistant principals now in all of our elementary schools. We also have guidance counselors for the first time in all of our elementary schools and social workers in place. Really, really important, we also added ClearTouch technology, so new ClearTouch technology boards in all of our elementary schools and eventually through our secondary schools, all with a focus of balancing social-emotional well-being with academic success at the elementary level, middle school, and high school level. We'll continue to promote and reinforce an inclusive learning environment for the students and the community we serve. We currently work with Nicole Holland Sims, and she will continue to lead our professional development work on equity and inclusion here in the school district. She's also working with the state, so she's pretty big time now. We'll continue to implement the new Act 13 evaluation system for all of our staff members here in the district. It'll be the second year of that new statewide implementation, but along with that, we hope to provide the best professional development we can for everybody here in the district as we move forward. So, I know it's a lot, but there's a lot that goes into running the school district. I want to thank the board for your leadership and stewardship during some very difficult and challenging times and taking on the willingness to improve the schools, the facilities, and stick your neck out there to hire new staff, and that shows in the budget that you put forward. I'm happy to entertain any questions that you may have based on that report. If not, that concludes my update for this evening. Oh, I'm sorry. Trevor, I just want to show off some pictures, I apologize, quickly. This is new and in place already at Aronomic Elementary School, so what used to be the entryway to the administrative offices, when you enter Aronomic now, this is what you'll see when you enter Aronomic. This is up and ready to go, and it's in even better condition now. This is taken a few weeks ago, so it's even in better place. New carpeting, this is again in the new administrative area, already up and running. The administration is functioning out of this area already at Aronomic Elementary School. I hope you could pay attention to the painstaking details of trying to infuse purple and gold throughout the school district wherever we go. It's a point of pride for me to rebrand the district, so even down to what the carpets look like, fabrics look like, people are annoyed by me in the meetings. Thank you, Christine, for dealing with me back there, but I think it's important that we emphasize that it's purple and gold wherever we go throughout the school district. Again, these are older pictures of what the new inside of what the front of Aronomic Elementary School will look like. It's already in place, so the administration is in there. This is 8201. In this area right here, this is where the administrative offices are. If you had seen this building years ago on Lansdowne Avenue, it was kind of an eyesore. It's beautiful now. Again, this is thanks to the hard work of Craig Rogers, Marvin Lee, Tim Leaf, and Craig Harnacek. On the other side of this area, all of our buses are now stacked. We added this new parking lot. When you come to our board meeting on the 22nd, you'll enter through these doors and go straight down this hallway. I don't want to show you those pictures yet, because I don't want you to see it that night. We're going to have a ribbon-cutting ceremony there, but you'll be able to enter and see where the new board meetings will take place. You'll park in this area. This is what used to be a baseball, softball field. We're redoing that. It will be a new middle school softball field for our middle school teams. That's going to be renovated back there as well. This right here is our new dispatch area for transportation, so the buses, they can look out over the transportation yard and dispatch the buses from that area. Marvin, I think I'm correct in giving that? Again, just some new views. This is the transportation side, maintenance and facilities over here. This is the new administrative side. This building is a building that we renovated, so we used an already existing facility and moved administration in there with our facilities team and transportation. Again, just wanted you to see, again, points of pride, the UD and the branding, when you enter the administrative offices, you'll see purple and gold and the UD branding and opportunity, unity, excellence throughout the building. Again, just some aerial views. So, I just wanted to highlight, there's a lot going on here. I know at times people question, "What are they doing in this school district?" But I think there's a lot of points of pride, and I'm not sure we always take enough time to celebrate them, so I want to say thank you, and we're moving things forward in a positive direction.
Thank you, Dr. McGary. Before you come down, before you come down, can you just share, by moving district administration out of, which was spread throughout all our buildings in the district, into one building, how many classrooms did we, just by doing that, just by taking what we already had and repurposing it?
So, just in that administrative area alone, between five to eight classrooms, plus you moved internally administration and the nurses' suite to a more appropriate spot and made the entry to Aronomic safer, so at a minimum, eight classrooms, but on top of that, a principal, assistant principal, nurses' suite, counseling suite, and a much safer entryway. As you recall, in Aronomic, you get buzzed in and could walk up a flight of stairs or go down to the cafeteria or up to the middle of where the principal's office was. Now, it's a much safer vestibule, so at a minimum, eight classrooms plus a nurses' suite, principal's suite, other ancillary spaces.
Safety improvements and stuff like that, too. Yeah, no, it's great.
And eight classrooms is a lot of, it's a lot of classrooms.
Yeah, it took care of a lot of work. That was great. Thanks, Dan.
Yep. Anything else? No? Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks again, Dr. McGarry. A lot of good news in that report. Thanks, thank you very much. Education and People's Services. We will now have an update on the June 20th, 2023 Education and People's Services Committee meeting from Director Williams, who, who will read a summary. A detailed summary of the meeting, including public comments, can be found on Board Docs. Thank you very much, Director Williams.
Thank you. That agenda summary from June 20th, there were two items. The first was the District Title I and an ATSI school-level plan. Board action will be required. That'll happen at this business meeting tonight. The Director of Elementary Education, Dr. Manfree, and the Director of Secondary Education, Mrs. Simone, presented the District Title I and ATSI school-level plans for this upcoming school year. Highlights from the plans and the timeline for, timeline for approval were discussed with the board and the public. Again, this item is for board action at this meeting. The second item was this upcoming school year's district professional development calendar. Board action was taken that evening during the special voting meeting. The Director of Curriculum, Dr. Kelly, presented the school year professional development for staff. There were no public comments. That concludes the agenda summary.
Thank you very much, Director Williams. The Finance and Operations Committee summary will be read. We will now have an update on that from the June 20th, 2023 meeting. This will be read by Director War Savage. A detailed summary of the meeting, including public comments, can be found on Board Docs.
Thank you, Vice President Fields. We discussed three items that evening on the agenda, first one of which was the 2023-2024 final budget presentation, which required board action. In compliance with the Act 1 timeline, district administration presented the 2023-24 final general fund budget. The final general fund budget took all available and relevant information into consideration and was presented with a 1% tax increase. Second item on the agenda was request to name a school district facility, which required board action. District administration reviewed a request to rename the Aronomic Library. Administration asked the board to consider the request and provide guidance on how they would like to proceed. Agenda item number three was Policy 707, Use of Facilities Update, which required board action. District administration provided an update on the most recent user group meeting. Administration provided an overview of the topics and potential solutions that were discussed. Based on the information presented, the board was asked how they would like to move forward with the current policy and procedures. There was one public comment. Agenda item number one, the speaker had asked how the costs prior to 2022 were absorbed. He said he believes in the idea of community service, and the impact on the budget is not worth not having those community programs. All other information regards to these meetings is on Board Docs.
Thank you, Director War Savage. The Instruction and Curriculum Report is in the hands of each board member and has been moved, has been made available to the public. I move for its adoption.
Second.
Second.
Thank you. Are there any comments from the board? All right, I would like to make a comment. The ATSI plans that Director Williams just referenced in her Education People's Services Committee summary, that, those are contained in this Instruction and Curriculum Report. These are planes, plans for achievement growth in, in these different schools. So they're, they are worth taking a look, taking a look at. I would like to thank the parents that participated in the development of these school improvement plans, who just gave some of their own time to, to help with the goals for these, these schools in our district. That's really, really much appreciated, and they are mentioned in these reports, so please take a look, and if you see them on the street, give them thanks. I'd also like to thank the administrators who held these meetings and who worked on these plans, including Dr. Manfree. So I would, again, go back to, are there any comments from the board? Are there any comments from the public? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please signify by saying I oppose and state your name for the record. Those abstaining, please signify by saying I abstain and state your name for the record. Now it's time for the Personnel Report from Director Rachel Mitchell.
Thank you, Vice President Fields. The Personnel Report is in the hands of each board member, and before I move for its adoption, I would like to congratulate our retirees and wish them a safe and healthy retirement. I also want to acknowledge all of the new appointees that are joining the Upper Darby family. Welcome, we are truly a family, and we hope that you will serve our community for a long time. Next, I would like to acknowledge a list of new administrators. First, I'm gonna highlight returning administrators who are taking on a new role, and I believe some of them are in the room tonight, so just want to congratulate you and thank you for your service in your previous role and in your new role. The first is Wendy Elgart. She will be the Director of Federal Programs, Food Services, and Deputy Title IX Coordinator. The next is William Moore. He will be the Assistant Principal at Upper Darby High School. My favorite kindergarten center principal, Deana Williams, is moving to be the principal of Charles Kelly Elementary School. Anna Marie Delassi, who I can't wait to get to know, will now be the principal of the kindergarten center, and I'm sorry for those comments, but I am the board rep for the K Center, and it's near and dear to my heart. The next is James Finch, who will be the Supervisor of Guidance. And Daniel Hyland, Supervisor of Secondary Instructional Technology. Congratulations to all of you. I love the pipeline that our administration is creating. Thank you. The next I would like to acknowledge staff members who are now taking on administrative roles. This is a big jump. I know that we have a lot of support in place, so please take advantage of that. We appreciate your service. The first is Elise, I believe Gonzalez. She'll be the Assistant Principal of Hillcrest Elementary School. And next is Danielle Bruno, Assistant Principal of Upper Darby High School. The next is Ron Cole, Assistant Principal of Drexel Hill Middle School. Lisa Mitchell, Assistant Principal of Upper Darby High School. Emily Duncan, Assistant Supervisor of Transportation. And Matthew Downing, Supervisor of Elementary Instructional Technology. Congratulations. With all of that being said, I move for adoption of the report as stated.
Second.
Thank you. Are there any comments from the board? Are there any comments from the public? Okay. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. All right, real quick, all those opposed, please signify by saying I oppose and state your name for the record. Those abstaining, please signify by saying I abstain and state your name for the record. Motion carried. All right. So all you folks that are here, please come on, come on up for a picture by yourself and with your families and with the, with your new colleagues.
All right, one, two.
Can we hold on counsel? You want to get in here and take some credit?
Yes, he does.
Even though it's a lot of people, get over that.
Let's go.
We did just a little bit more. All right, shee. One, two. Thank you. All right. Wait, I'm sorry. All right. One, two. Good job.
Daycare, daycare. Too many pictures for daycare.
Yeah. Can you give us a couple of them? Thank you.
Thank you.
Policy, Policy Report first reading. Mr. Disnoyers.
Thank you, Vice President Fields. No, no vote is required, but I do have a comment to make. And first, I should say, the updates included in the report tonight are based on a presentation by administration at the June 20th Finance and Operations Committee meeting and a, and a board discussion that followed. And I, I learned earlier today that the updates included in the report this evening may not quite accurately capture the results of the board's discussion on June 20th. So if, if, if the updates need to be tweaked, they will for when the, this policy appears on the agenda at the Finance and Operations Committee meeting on the 22nd of this month. But to, to basic, to give a, give a very brief summary of the updates currently included, per the results of the board discussion of Policy 707 at the June 20th, 2023 Finance and Operations Committee meeting, typical and normal custodial fees for youth groups are waived. There are also several additional minor updates to clarify the policy. With that, I thought I would offer any board members that would like to make a brief comment And since this is, since no vote is required, there does not have to be public comment on this agenda item. Okay.
That concludes?
That concludes.
All right. Thank you, Director Disnoyers. I appreciate that. Policy Report, second reading, there's no report. Supplies Report Approval, Director War Savage.
Thank you very much, Vice President Fields. The Supplies Report is in the hands of each board member and has been made available to the public. I move for its adoption.
Thank you. Are there any comments from the board?
I, I just want, I realize, School Pass, when, when I first remember hearing about it, if I recall correctly, it was for discussion for the high school and maybe also the middle schools? I just realized I didn't, this is for all secondary or all schools? All secondary?
Yes, this is for secondary schools, as, as we recall, if you hope you recall, there was, it was a lot of conversation about what protective devices we'd be bringing into the district. We reviewed weapons detection systems as a conversation, mentorship programming. In that conversation, one of the ways to identify students in the hallway and keep track of attendance better was to go down this path with these, with this, with this update instead of more hardscape technology in the district. So School Pass will be something we'll be implementing at the secondary schools once students are in session here at the high school. It requires students to wear IDs. There'll be whole discussion and presentation on that. We will provide another update to the board on that, but it will require student IDs for them to be scanned in when they enter the building, the late line, and in each classroom in the building. And if they're not in class or in the hallway, they'll be stopped by a hall monitor, and they'll have to produce their ID for identification to see where they are going, where they're supposed to be.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Director Hague. Are there any comments from the public? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, please signify by saying I oppose and state your name for the record. Those abstaining, please signify by saying I abstain and state your name for the record. Motion carried. There is no transportation report. Facilities Report, Director Morrisey is not here. I will read the Facilities Report. Facilities Report and the Use of Facilities Report are in the hands of each board member and have been made available to the public. I move for their adoption. I'm gonna ask for comments from the board. I have one comment for myself. Please note that the Act 34 Resolution for Clifton Heights Middle School is included in the Facilities Report. The Act 34 meeting will be Tuesday, September 19th, 2023, beginning at 7:00 PM. Do we have a location?
It'll be at 8201, at the new, in the new board.
It'll be at the new administration building. Fantastic. Any other comments from the board? Are there any comments from the public? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please signify by saying I oppose and state your name for the record. Those abstaining, please signify by saying I abstain and state your name for the record. Motion carried. No Food Services Report. Now for the Finance and Budget Report Approval from Director Dr. Hague.
Thank you, Vice President Fields. The Finance and Budget Report is in the hands of each board member and has been made available to the public. I move for its adoption.
Are there any comments from the board? Are there any comments from the public? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please signify by saying I oppose and state your name for the record. Those abstaining, please signify by saying I abstain and state your name for the record. Motion carried. Collateral Assignments. There's no report for Community College. For the ICU, Director Mitchell.
Yes, thank you, Vice President Fields. The DCIU met for their meeting last Wednesday, and they approved several contracts. I'm gonna send you guys the actual report, but I did want to highlight one thing for our administrators. We did approve a contract with AHA process to provide a full-day workshop on emotional poverty. The instructor is Dr. Ruby Payne. It's on October 26th. I highly recommend that any administrator who's invited attends. I had went to a conference where Dr. Ruby Payne presented, and it was maybe one of the most inspirational, moving workshops that I went to one year at a school board conference. So I'm thrilled that we're bringing her here, right here to Delaware County, and I hope everyone who's able to, administration-wise attends, again, it's on October 26th, and it's at the Morton Center. And then I'll send you guys the rest of that. We do have a committee meeting tomorrow night. It's strictly based on facilities, the Falcroft Project that we're working on, which is an expansion of that center. A lot of our students attend there as well as Head Start, so that is our committee meeting for tomorrow night, and I will have a report for next month. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Director Mitchell. Do you have anything for Legislative Council?
Vice President Fields, there isn't a meeting coming up, but I did want to do one call to action for the community. In regards to all the conversations that we've had about the budget lately, one of those items includes something called Level Up, and I'll get straight to the chase in this call to action email. This year's Level Up money seems to be in jeopardy. Without getting super into the weeds, the fiscal code needs to be written in order for Level Up funding to be released. This is supplemental funding that allows our school district and many others to provide the needed services much needed to our students. But there is an indication that the Senate majority will hold that legislation back as a bargaining chip for vouchers, essentially threatening this needed funding for under-resourced public school students because they want to throw a private school lifeline to those under, to those under-resourced students. So in other words, they're playing games with our money, and that's totally not acceptable. That's something that State Rep Heather Boyd already understands. That's something that State Rep Gina Curry already understands, same with State Senator Tim Kearney. But I'm encouraging the community to reach out to those offices and maybe some of the offices of political affiliations that you might not necessarily get along with, and encourage them to. encourage them to pass responsible legislation that lets this funding become available when it's supposed to. Because I'm sure Craig Rogers can get into the weeds on it if he really wants to. But as a result, if those funds are not approved when they are supposed to, school districts are going to have to start making some interestingly tough choices in regards to who's going to get paid when, and if services are going to need to be delayed. And it's just a mess, and we're going through enough already. We want our money. We want what is due, and Level Up is part of that, and just contact those legislative offices to help that come through. Thank you.
Thank you, Director War Savage. Very well spoken. Mendehall Tyson Scholarship Committee, is there a report? I would say no. Home and School, Director War Savage.
Just to reiterate what Dr. McGarry had already said, meeting on the 14th.
Fantastic. No report for Technology. No report for PSBA.
Just the upcoming conference in October. I think you and President Brown are attending.
Thank you very much. There will also be a virtual delegate meeting in November, and we're still hammering out who's going to be attending that. I'll be talking to you about that at some point. Policy Liaisons, Director Disnoyers, anything?
Just that the plan is currently to have a, to present a responsible contractor policy for a first reading at the September Board Meeting. So watch for that.
Thank you. Any reports from Communication, Director Hague or Director Mitchell?
Just that, of course, anyone who wants to receive the monthly update from the board can sign up on our, on the district website. There's, any community member can receive it. And we, of course, all took a hiatus for July, but we will be working on the August update and getting it out soon.
Fantastic. I eagerly await it. Upper Darby Arts and Education Foundation, Director Murphy is the liaison for that. She is not here tonight. That is everything for collateral assignments. Does anybody have anything on their old business? Ah, okay. For new business, there's one item, there's receipt. The district did receive a charter school application. The charter hearing will be scheduled to take place immediately following the August 22 Committee Meeting. That'll be in the new admin building, 8201. So if you're interested in seeing that presentation from the applicants, August 22 at the new administration building. And I don't know, is that everything we need to say for that? Director, Dr. McGarry?
No, there's an application was submitted, and per policy and process, there'll be a hearing where the applicant will put on their part, and then the district administration will review the application with community members and follow our policy and provide an update to the board based on the application, and the board will take action in a timely fashion.
Fantastic. Thank you very much. We are now at the time for the public hearing. We could, we are now at the time for the public hearing. We will call on Upper Darby School District residents who signed in to address the board in the order in which they signed in, followed by email and phone comments, if we have any. We would ask that you come forward, give your name and your address, and present your comments in the three-minute time limit. In accordance with Policy 903, the time allotted for general comments, both in-person and submitted comments, will not exceed one hour. Going to our list. I believe this is Alonzo Good. Do I have that correct? There you are. Come up to the microphone, introduce yourself. This one right over here. State your name and your address, and then three minutes for your comments.
Okay, my name is Alonzo Good. I'm 19. I graduated from Upper Darby High School in 2022, and came here. I have some notes on my phone that I have to read off, but basically, oh, 517 Elm Avenue. I'm right down the street from the municipal library. Yeah, right down there. I'm also one half of Soldiers for Recovery, which is, the focus is alcohol and prevention, alcohol and drug prevention. Real quick, before I get into it, I want to go down the list. I feel like this is very important, of the people in this school district who has impacted me a lot. So I started in Anderson Elementary School, which is in Philadelphia, for first grade and second grade, and then I moved to Senko. And I went to Senko, and I was there, and there was a lot of nice people. Mr. Schwartz was there, that's the first time I met him. I went to Bywood, and this is when Mr. Marshalek and Mr., yeah, and this is when Mr. Marshalek and Mr. Mackenty were still in the same building. So this was definitely, well, not a long time ago, for me it was. But then I went to Beverly Hills Middle School with Mr. March and Mr. Toomes. Mr. Holford was my teacher. It was a great time back then. And then I went to Upper Darby High School, where I was the homecoming king, Mr. Upper Darby. I spoke at the graduation. I did a lot inside this region. So I've seen a lot and been through a lot here as well. And so the main focus today is to speak on, I have an idea. Me and my uncle here, who started as my barber seven years ago, we started Soldiers for Recovery, which is alcohol and drug prevention, and we feel as though we would love to bring a presentation to Upper Darby High School. I'm in a good position to where, you know, younger kids in my age group don't like to listen to people who are way older than them. They look at them and they say, oh, this is an older person. They don't know what they're talking about. Since I'm in the age group where people, they grasp it more when it's somebody in their age group, I feel like bringing this play, it's a public speaking and theatrical play, to high schools around or wherever, we can definitely change the future, definitely. Because I know a lot of my friends and my family, or even old teachers that have taught me, I've seen them get into drugs and alcohol, and it really, it diminishes our whole community. We talk about a lot of the technological advances that we made to the school district and how we're still in need of teachers. It doesn't matter if we have 3 million teachers inside this building, if they don't connect with the students as well as they need, then it's not going to, it's not going to affect anything. Let me check real quick whatever else I said. We've been to Boys Latin. We've went to Thomas Jefferson University, Chichester High School, so definitely from elementary school, middle school, all the way up, and we feel as though we can definitely make a change. So we're not looking for a answer today. We did, I think, 20, 20 schools last year, and had great, great reception from everybody up to down. So, yeah, so that's my pitch. It's great to see everybody here, old teachers who I've taught, I mean, Ms. Gonzalez was actually in here, which is a lot of people who impacted my life. So I definitely want to give back to the community, and thank you so much.
Hello to the board. My name is Sulaiman Hassan. I am a resident at 846 Eaton Road, Drexel Hill, right around the corner. I've been living in this district now for almost about six, seven years. Just purchased a new home right here on 334 Lincoln Avenue, which I love the neighborhood. I love the people in this neighborhood, and I plan on spending the rest of my life here. First, I want to give thanks to everyone, the whole board, for being here today. I heard some amazing things, amazing plans that's coming together, and congratulations to everyone who leveled up, let's say that. Leveled up. I think they all left, though. Yeah, well, let them know that Sulaiman Hassan is very pleased with that. So I'm here. The reason why I'm here, because I am an addiction awareness speaker. I've been traveling throughout the country, up and down the East Coast, and I help young, youngest like 10 years old, all the way up till adulthood, get the treatment that they need. So here in Upper Darby, I've noticed that up 69th Street Terminal is getting very bad. A lot of the students in this district travel through that area all day long to go in and out of the city, and they're seeing that that substance abuse is getting worse. So in Philadelphia, you've got to excuse me because I'm a little nervous. In Philadelphia, I partner with Philadelphia, and we're doing a 30, what is it, 32? Yes, 32 to 60 school tour next year on just substance abuse awareness through my stage play with me and my nephew, Alonzo Gomes. And we would like to present it here as a preventive measure for the school district of Upper Darby. We are losing kids, youngest 12 years old, and anyone that wants to follow my page is called Soldiers for Recovery on Instagram. I'm up Kensington every day. The youngest child I've seen up there was 12 years old. 12 years old. This thing cannot be ignored. This is a serious matter. This is a serious issue, and I'll be darned if Philly is going to get the upper hand to invite us with open arms, and the city right next door has an open opportunity to bring us in so we can help save some lives. And not just save lives, but talk and educate the students about drugs and alcohol. Because obviously, this is bad. Obviously, this is being ignored, but it's growing so big that it can't be ignored. And not to mention, kids, youngest third grade, we have third grade students that are vaping now. And you see around the neighborhood of Upper Darby, we see around the neighborhood of 69th Street. We see the whole neighborhood up in this district where all these little stores are opening up, and these kids are purchasing vape pens. So what are we going to do? What can we do? What we can do is have Soldiers for Recovery come into the schools so we can teach and educate the students about drugs and alcohol through our stage play. It's been very effective. The last place I spoke at, me and my nephew, was Thomas Jefferson University School of Medicine, to be exact. And now we're getting ready to start a 32 to 60 school tour in Philadelphia.
Thank you very much.
And we're here to present it to you guys as well.
Thank you very much.
You probably all know my address by now. Susan Parker, 2104 Green Hill Road, Post Office, Lansdowne, Upper Darby Township. And I came last year to give you a history. I'm unique that I've lived in my same house since 1978. I've been involved. So I spoke from firsthand history experience from 1980, right up until Director Dunlap's plan to do Cardington School, and that's as far as I've been involved. So this year, I'm going to come every month, too. And what I'm going to call attention to, I loved the things that are happening here. My kids actually went to Bywood Elementary. My neighborhood is the Plaza. It's eight square blocks, and when my kids were that age, there were two parochial schools, so there weren't that many Publix. Now, though, I walk my dog down, I know everybody up and down the street. They all know me, the old lady with the two dogs. And so there are a lot more kids because both parochial schools are gone. And my kids got bused to Bywood. And the reason I got involved is they went to a different school every year, and they were the other school. And so language is important. Now you're talking about Aronomic and the other school who's coming. And the two women who called, you know, spoke, read their, had their remarks read, and, you know, that message, kids pick things up. And so I'm a little concerned that you should start saying it's the school. And so now that is it. But I want to point out the inequity throughout the district. Bywood has four classrooms, portable classrooms. I've never seen one at Aronomic. And now you have an addition there that that community could never, ever support. So my fear is that you think carding these kids from Cardington in my neighborhood, there is the solution. And it's really unfair. You know, I was very involved in the school all the way through BH, not in high school, but my kids didn't, were too embarrassed. But anyway, but, so I'm concerned that it seems to be like not in the, even on the agenda, and that you're thinking that this is a solution for people from Cardington. My neighborhood gets on the bus first and gets off the bus last. Now, they're not going to Glen Olden anymore, but they used to come back as late as 4:30, depending on the traffic. Now, okay, now the kids from Cardington, you know, it's not much better. I mean, coming all the way across from Aronomic back, so that's still a problem. I used to see kindergarten parents standing on the corner, waiting and waiting and waiting. Oh, well, they have a shortage of bus drivers. They've been told that so many times throughout the school year. And so this business about continuing to bus people out of their neighborhood, you have a shortage of bus drivers. I do remember Dunlap saying that the money we spend on busing could be put into a school in that area, and that would take some of the pressure off. I mean, my neighborhood, I think they probably should go to Bywood. That makes the most sense. That's the closest school. We don't really have anything out. But like I said, my neighborhood, I've been to the kindergarten before, Drexel Hill Elementary. They'd been to Hillcrest. They'd been to Garrettford, and they were about to be put back again. That's how I got involved. So anyway, I'll see you next month.
Are there any online comments?
There are no online or phone comments tonight.
Or phone comments. Thank you, Aronda. Is there a motion for the adjournment of the meeting?
So moved? Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.